Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Okay, move item to E1, Affordable Housing Alternatives.
On March 18th, City Council took two actions. They set a date of May 2nd to eliminate camping within the Marsh area and also directed that a request for proposals go out to determine if there's any community interest in looking for some, for some solutions for both, in particular for in the short term as, as the city continues to work with the county on implementation of the focused strategies. So, a RFP was released on the following Friday, March 25th. Proposal indicated the city is seeking the services of an organization to develop and implement a strategy for the relocation of the homeless population that have been unable to locate shelter or housing to another site for a maximum period of six months. Shelter may take the form of a building, or buildings, or land that can be utilized for tiny houses or tents. The scope of work noted that the budget shall not include city matching funds or any funding provided by the city. On April 22nd, AHA submitted a proposal that had some of the following key provisions: A sanctuary camp to tiny house village project that would provide a legal, safe place for people to live that includes food, healthcare, and services. Proposal calls for the creation of three villages as transitional communities for both tent and car camping. The cost was put at $51,330 per year for each 30-member site. And three sites were put forward at a total cost then of $153,990. And I think it was such that either one site could be approved, two sites, or, or three sites. Funding was proposed to come from housing successor funds and renters would pay $35 a month as, as part of funding those ongoing operation costs. Several sites were proposed in the proposal: the lot adjacent to the fire training center, the city lot over, kind of near the foot of T Street on the bay, and another unnamed site that they requested the city and county could identify for a tiny house village that could be permitted under the shelter crisis declaration as part of that. Also, from a management standpoint, that each camp would be managed 24/7 with one FTE and volunteers. We analyzed the proposal, I think from the concept, that the proposal to create a sanctioned tent camp that transitions to a tiny house village is an appropriate concept. However, we thought the proposal may be better suited as part of a longer-term solution rather than six months. On the cost, the use of housing successor funds for a sanctioned tent camp has not been consistent with direction from the city council. To date, the council has authorized $50,000 in these funds for expansion for the Betty Quan Chin Day Center that will provide 10 units of family housing with support services. That was for a physical building and those units are slated to be open in August. The city did not provide any funds on the proposal that came in ahead of the RFP. That was the, the G-COP collaborative that, of course, opened up this weekend on the Mercer Fraser property. We felt the sites adjacent, the site adjacent to the fire training center is, is heavily impacted by wetlands and did not meet the ESHA standards that were in the shelter crisis declaration and didn't believe the site at, along the bay was an appropriate site for a sanctioned tent camp. We believe the management that they proposed was, was adequate. So, one of the primary concerns addressed by the city council in establishing the date of May 2nd for eliminating encampments was to maintain a focus on housing-first strategies for city resources and to identify short-term shelter space to address the immediate need for a legal place to sleep. City's worked with St. Vincent de Paul, the Eureka Rescue Mission, the G-COP collaborative, and allocated the use of city-owned lot at Washington Coster for overnight sleeping and then some other resources to accommodate these short-term needs for housing. So, based on those criteria, the recommendation was to deny the request for housing successor funds and use of city-owned property for a sanctioned tent camp that transitions to a tiny house village. Also included in your packet is the proposal from AHA.
Okay. Questions for staff at this point? Marion?
I didn't, what was the second? Deny the request for successor funds and the second was?
And the use of a city-owned property.
Questions? Are you ready? Staff?
Could we have the representative from AHA come up and propose, and talk about the proposal a little bit so they aren't just under our public comment?
Do we have a representative from AHA that can speak to the proposal? Yeah, come on. Please step forward.
Thanks for asking.
Yes, the first question I want to ask you is how much of what we submitted did the council get to see?
The only thing we did not provide was the attached, these attachments, but we provided everything else that was part of the, the 10-page proposal. And certainly if council would like to see the other attachments, we can send those around.
No, so that means that unless you went to the AHA website, unless you went to-
We have, we have the income expense statement all in here.
Okay. Good. We also submitted some diagrams and some other things that were there. I don't know if you got those. Okay. So, this is really kind of a difficult time to talk about this after what we watched happen because the intention was to not let, not have that happen. So, thanks. Anyway, the proposal was for three sites. As city manager mentioned, we were asking for funds. We weren't violating the RFP in our minds. We went to the Q and answer, Q and A session with a lot of other people and we were encouraged to ask for the things that we thought we needed, so we did. Money and land. And that apparently dinged us severely. But for accommodations for 100 people who would have had other places to go than just the massive diaspora we saw yesterday, people going off into the streets, I think it was a pretty good investment. I don't know if you have specific questions I'd like to ask. I don't know how, it seems to me that most of you understand the proposal if you read that conceptually. The argument would seem to be how does this fit into housing first? Or how does this fit into an implementation plan that would be in agreeance with that? And we've talked about the continuum of housing along with the continuum of care and it's got to begin where people are. And these people were resident campers in the encampments. A community, a really nice community in many, many ways that would have been easily moved into a village atmosphere to be resident, managed, and so forth. So, that, that can be regrouped, that's the idea, but that would have been very easy as a transition for what you're asking for. So, you're, you were asking for something that you really didn't intend to have happen, so we were trying to work with that. I mean, that's the way the RFP was written. The date to remove was after the thing, so it's kind of hard to write under those circumstances. But anyway, that's the idea. Tiny house villages give people the same thing that they've got in, in Containerville or whatever. I don't know, is there a name for that? Okay, so, what? Shh, okay, well. Apartments, Betty's Apartments, okay. Because people will call them by different things, so it's good to have a, a way to tag it. You know, people have a space, a space that allows them to have privacy and autonomy. That's what the tiny houses do. They have a door they can lock, some, someplace they can call home. And from there, the next step up is actually tiny houses that are fully equipped for permanent housing or permanent supportive housing in a similar communal setting. So, it's a pathway and you got to start somewhere. And that was what we were trying to present to the council and the city to begin there. It's very doable, it's very reasonable, and it's quite affordable, so. Got any questions?
Linda?
Jude. All right, yeah. Linda, go ahead.
So, if, if you were to do this, how long would it take you to set up a, the, the initial campground part?
That could be very, that could be very quick.
Like?
A week. Or depending on how big it is or how much it is.
Any other questions right now? Marion?
I wasn't at the meeting, I can remember why, but I couldn't be at the meeting where they did all the explanations of what the request for proposals was. But it wasn't clear that we were not going to expend any city funds for this.
At that, no, at that meeting, the RFP said yes. It was, it was a very strange RFP. In fact, we, we had grappled with it a lot because I've written lots of proposals and responded to many RFPs as have my colleagues here, and we've never had one that didn't offer anything. I mean, not even technical assistance, nothing, nothing, other than, you know, if you want to do this, do it. And we want to do it out of the compassion we have for the people that we've been, you know, working with all along. So, that, at that meeting, the city manager said if there's something that you think you want to ask for, land or money or what, then ask for it. So, we did.
Any other questions?
I have a brief comment that I, I wrote most of it, but really, we worked on this for over two years with the community and with homeless folks. So, this didn't come just out of, oh, well, let's just ask the city for a lot of stuff. It really came out of what the needs were and what we could see as a very immediate and transitional path to permanent housing, which is what you all really want to have for, for people who are homeless. And we really tried hard to comply with the RFP project process, as Nezzi said, and no one else responded to your RFP process. And I guess two of the other things that are really important about the proposal: it really is based on a community-building model and really definitely researched best practices. So, we didn't respond just by saying, no, we want these things from you and it can't be done otherwise, but we really looked at best practices for getting folks chronically homeless off the street and into permanent housing. And this is the path that really is best practices throughout the country. The other issue is the budget. And we really did a lot of work on that. We really did call B and B and ask how much things cost and looked at ADA requirements that might be there because many of the folks living out in the Marsh and chronically homeless are disabled. And so, the, the figures are really pretty good and pretty firm. The other thing is that with small support from the city and county in terms of services, because we need both of you to make this happen, the, the village is self-sustaining really after the first year because we have built-in rent or when the tiny houses would be built, they would be establishing equity accounts and give them a leg up on getting into permanent housing. So, I really, and the city does have vacant properties about, and you passed the shelter crisis declaration, which really was to facilitate that happening until you need the property for something concrete that you want to do. You want to build a trail? And so, for all the years that the Marsh sat there, that was all fine and then it could change, right? And that really is the proposal we've put before you. It's a good investment and it would relieve this city of the diaspora that is out there now.
One last thing, that, there's been comments made in this chamber before about why hasn't AHA done anything and so forth. We've been trying to work with the city. We've been trying to be available to solve this and work with you to make it happen. And we really haven't felt like that's been a partnership. It's been really hard to, to stay on this trail and be handed a lot of resistance. The part that we can't do, which is the, the really important part about building community, is you don't know what's behind us for people who want to participate. Whenever we have a meeting, we have people say, I want to build a house. I want to make sure that happens. I want to do this. We don't have an opportunity for our community to participate with the people who need to be part of community and they want to spend hang, spend time together. So, that seems to be a real issue that we should really put up and elevate at a high level of what value that is for us. And it has nothing to do with money. It has to do with space and place and commitment and will and all of those things. So, think about that and really give us some support.
The other question I have is, is the way the RFP was, was framed is for a six-month project and what would you do at the end of that six months with the houses? Do you have a transition to a permanent location?
We will always be working in that direction, but in our model, the houses, the idea of having a village and building up equity is if someone wants to transition out of that into something else, then they can, they can take the equity and we'll buy it back or whatever. Or if they have the capability of taking it somewhere, they can take it somewhere with them and we do another one if we were in a space for any period of time. It's all movable. It all can go somewhere. And we'll auction them off. We'll raise money. We'll do what we did before, whatever, whatever it was. And we have people in community that, that are very much poised to help us do this and, and would probably take them back to what they're doing too, or whatever. I mean, there's not, that is not, that's the least of our issues.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause my concern is, is that I know that taking the step from being under the shelter crisis where we can relax our, our building codes and stuff into being a, a properly code, code place that, that our building codes cover and, and all of the things that that requires is kind of a big step. So, you would just disband until you could get to that, that, that place? You'd tell you had property that you, you could put the tiny houses on legally and meet the codes?
Disband, meaning if it wa, at the end of six months?
Yeah.
Well, if that's what, if that's what the city makes us do, whether we're successful or not, then that's probably what we would do. It seems like a, a difficult vesting process, but, but it is doable. And we would, we would probably try to do it in a way that would accommodate everybody. So, if people are living in a house and we need to get it out of there before six months, because if it's going to end at six months, then we're going to displace people earlier than anticipated, or they're going to go back to a tent or whatever. I mean, we really need to think about this issue.
Right, okay.
Well, and I think that in the, in the proposal, we made clear that our exit strategy, which is what you were asking for in some ways, is really the access to permanent housing. And that is on the city and county to create those. Are the likelihood of that being available for 30 to 100 people in six months is, my guess is that that's going to be really hard on your side to see that that kind of thing happens. And so, a little relaxing on that with something that is mobile, so it can be moved to another place if, if that needs, that disruption needs to happen. But essentially, it really is to work into housing first.
And, and just so you know, we're going to keep doing this. So, if you don't decide not to do it and want us to do it for you at some other time, we're going to seek ways that this can happen because it, there are many people who are very interested in the idea, see that it can happen. And like you held off about focused strategies, we've held off to make it available to the city, so, or the county, or, because that's what it takes to solve it for the responsible parties. We do have the right, the responsibility under the law to take care of our indigent population. It doesn't matter the valuation or the judgments that people make about how they got there or anything. It's our responsibility, so.
Can I just say one thing? When it comes to time, there's only five of you and we've been working on this for two years. So, six months is, how do we work in six months with 100 people? I mean, we've really been talking about this for two years, the five of you. And so, for me, the time is, and when we're dealing with people, we seen it yesterday, it's complicated. It's really complicated and in six months is, is a short time, as we know. I mean, we've been here for two years, so I just want us to remember that, how long it's taken us to get the 40 spots, the containers. It's been a long road going and so, remember that time passes quickly and we do need time when we're dealing with human beings.
And many solutions need to come forward. Betty and the business community have come forward with something, but it, it's going to take a lot of different ones to actually solve the problem and have people comfortably at home, so.
Any more questions? All right.
And I would just like to say, if you don't like the three-site idea, maybe there is a one-site idea that you can think of, that the city can find in an SB2 zone that might give you an opportunity to have a pilot project that you could live with to see whether or not you want to invest in it in a bigger way to make it something that will begin to develop the continuum of housing that will always be needed for people without.
Okay. Any more questions for staff or?
We obviously need to extend the meeting again at this time. You extended it to 9:45, is that correct? So, I'd like to move that we extend the meeting to 10:15.
Second.
Move a second and go ahead and vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Chair Bellini dissenting, motion carries.
Okay. Any more questions for staff at this point? Yes, go ahead.
So, my recollection of our focus strategies report was they recommended against tent cities, period. So, if we had in our proposal that it was okay for them to establish tent, a tent city or tent compound for six months, that, that isn't what I thought that focused strategies in our, our plan was for. So, I'm kind of surprised if that was in that RFP. Because in here, it says, the analysis says the proposal may be better suited as part of a longer, for the sanctioned tent camp, a longer-term solution rather than six months, which seems to be going completely, it's like a permanent tent city? You know, I'm like, mm, you know, this is not what I want to see. Transitioning to tiny houses.
Yeah, I think, as you recall, the council made the decision to go on an RFP on a, on a three to two vote. And, and I think the council recognized that in the short term, there may, needs to be a place for people to go. And so, that's why we worked on such things as creating, you know, the shelter beds and so on. So, I think from the sense that a sanctioned camp that transitions to tiny house village, I mean, I, like I said, I, I don't think that's a bad concept. I think there's a lot of things that make sense about that concept. It didn't, the council had indicated though, from a, from a sanctioned tent camp, you didn't want that to be longer than six months. So, so this is kind of a hybrid. So, I think that's the thing you have to, to kind of weigh out based, based upon the input you had from, from the AHA presenters and whether or not you think that's appropriate use of housing successor funds as, as well as in location.
Well, do the fact that, that we know with the, the people that stepped up, that asked for no money, that came up with a place, that came up with the buildings, that came up with the free labor to do the buildings, that, that's 40 people that were housed, which the idea is there, is that the DHHS is, is there daily, working with the people to figure out what their issues might be, whether it's medication, whether, what, what prevents them, you know? Is it strictly money? What is, what is, what are the issues? So, that's all being dealt with there. But also, it's also a place that, that the fact that we also had the 35 beds at St. Vincent de Paul, that if the rescue mission was full, then they could open that up. So, it's not like the people down there, if they were willing to store their belongings, we offered, we, we've given them a place to store their belongings, we've given them places to sleep in whatever fashion you want to call those words. That means that they're not going to be outside, you know, that they're going to be safe. And then, and then we've got people being transitioned, hopefully, through the DHHS process with the G-COP facility. So, I don't want to see, I don't want to see a tent city. I don't want to see it, you know, just as I told the business people that spoke in anger the other night, everywhere is somebody's neighbor. So, if you say, oh, well, just stick them down there under the bridge, you know, at the foot of T Street, again, there's neighbors there. There's, there's going to be people upset. People have businesses in that whole area, tons of businesses. You've got people now traipsing back and forth all the way to the welfare department, you know? So, I felt that the Betty Chin solution was elegant, perfect, had a shower, has, you know, she's giving them three meals a day while they work through their issues. And I think that that is, that was sensible. I think that putting people in tents and having them come into, you know, maybe longer than six months, that's not something that I want to see for our city.
Is that a question for staff or we?
Well, we've already had, have we already had?
No.
We haven't had public comment.
Marion?
Sorry.
All right. Is there any more questions?
I thought we had public comment, okay.
Do we have any more questions for staff at this point? All right. I'll open the item.
It did start out as a question.
Okay.
About, why, what did they have in their request for proposals about the tiny?
All right, all right. I'll open the item for public comment. Is there anyone present that'd like to comment on the agenda item?
This isn't for public comment. I, I, exactly, I just want to clarify something. When you're talking about a tent city, you know, I brought some, some slides in my pocket on a thumb drive that might be helpful, but we're not talking about a tent city. Maybe if you thought about it in terms of an outdoor living center, because it's an area where people are actually outside and they have space available and it, it, it isn't something that's a tent city. It's a, it's a, it's a community in progress. And focused strategies did say, don't disperse the population as well as saying, you know, tent cities aren't good. So, I just, it's a reframing of how it might look in your mind. Just think it an image of something a little more possible.
We're going to go to public comment at this time. So, is there people present that'd like to comment on the agenda item?
I'd like to point out the Costa Street parking does not allow you to stake a, a tent down, so in heavy winds, it's going to blow over. The tarps, there's no way to get a tarp. Tents are not rain-proof and it will get wet, anybody. So, the Costa Street parking lot is out on any windy or rainy nights. I'd also like to mention you guys spoke about cruel and unusual punishment. What is cruel and unusual punishment is not supporting AHA and allowing people to walk around 24 hours a day with everything they own on their backs, not able to sit, sleep, or stand in public. I'd also like to mention that tiny houses are a better option than a facility. Like Nezzi has pointed out, people get to actually put equity into them and take them wherever they go. They get to put equity in them and they get to use that money for a down payment on a apartment or a place. Right now, you guys don't have enough affordable housing. That's the problem in the community. So, if you guys had the affordable housing, a six-month goal would be great, but you don't. So, if you don't have a six-month goal at the end of this for you guys, how can you expect these guys to have a six-month goal? So, you guys need to work on a more realistic end goal together, which in our economy and the way housing prices are going up, it's not going to, it's going to get worse. So, finding long-term solutions like AHA is the, the most reasonable thing to do. Focused strategies didn't know anything about AHA when they came. I would be very, I would, I would bet my nothing that I have that focused- I would be very, I would, I would bet my nothing that I have, that focus strategies would be very happy to hear of alternatives like AHA that would put people into long-term supportive housing. I think whenever you guys are picturing sanctuary camps, you might be envisioning what happened at Palco Marsh. However, the residents of Palco Marsh were thrown back there without anything in their toolboxes. They had no resources, no money, no hope, no direction, no role models, and yet, what did you guys expect them to do back there? They need a regulated camp, they need somebody to show them positive role models by providing them with the community building, building their own structures, and giving them the skills by building their own structures, which will lead them into jobs, which will help them get the, the love and respect from their community, which is what they need. These people are so knocked down by our society, by all of the traumatic experiences they can. And you can sit there and you can look down and text, or read, or whatever you want to do, to roll your eyes and ignore everybody, Ms. Brady, but it's, it's, you're, you're envisioning what happened at Palco Marsh is what a sanctuary camp is, and the tiny house village is not that. And I would really appreciate if you would actually read the proposal that AHA wrote. These people cannot do something with nothing, and everybody threw them back there with nothing and expected them to make something, so why don't you give them something to make something out of? And I bet you guys would be very surprised. Actually read the proposal, thank you.
Next speaker.
I would like at least just one, because if all else, if every bed is full, I can almost guarantee you, there's 30 people. There's 30 people. Have you ever tried to put a feral cat in a box? It's not that easy, and you kind of have to give it a little love, and give it some time at the vet, and do some things before it can wander around your house without causing a bunch of shit. Also, according to the focus strategies report, I was there, and when they were told about the camp being dismantled, they were actually surprised, that was the first time. No one from city or county had told them. So that is the disconnect there. And I will speak from many of my consumers who have been screaming, "We can't go inside yet." They really do need some transitional time, and right now, you have public health issues scurrying about the entire city. And you may not want to see it in your backyard, but it's in your backyard. It's in my backyard. It's hell of in my backyard, because I live one street up off Broadway. So it's really in my backyard. I'm on the recycling loop, and I'm never pissed. I set my recycling out, I make sure my home is safe, so that my friends that don't have a home, so that they're not tempted to do something that makes them unsafe. And you may be just as tired of hearing me as you are, every other advocate, but that's our jobs. It's our jobs. You wear us down by the resistance, and we wear you down by the constant telling of hope, and please, and hope, and please. And I'm asking, they may not be happy if I'm just like, just one, I didn't ask them, but I'm asking, please, just one, at least just one. That, that, it's not everything, and it's not nothing. And the people that we're trying to get something for, they need just something. And some people may think that I don't know how to collaborate, however, I am very connected to DHHS services. I have the ability to have clinicians come, I have the ability to reach out to open door, I have that ability. And I have also told AHA that I would heavily support and give volunteers, and do whatever it is necessary if they were granted this. And that's all free, that's all free to you guys. So everything we're doing is free to you guys. This is our problem, it's not my problem, and it's not your problem, it's ours. So can we please agree on at least just one? Because I vote, and I pay taxes.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff, to the mayor. Greg, how, how can you guys move tomorrow, tomorrow on Palco Marsh, when, when that group has a temporary restraining order they got from the court down in San Francisco, restraining you guys from doing that? Maybe I should have asked the city attorneys to you, but I thought I'd asked you, mayor.
Well, I'll answer that for you later. Right now, we're taking public comment on the agenda item, okay? Richard?
Okay, do, um, I, I, I think this group has a good idea, along with Betty's idea, and I think the city should, should sell themselves a six, six-month goal to find a way to, to transition all these people that are going to move tomorrow elsewhere, to get them permanent housing. Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
The people that relocated to the Palco Marsh at the request of the city, built a community. Some of the people that prepared for winter by bringing in pallets, and used wood, and large tarps, and, and had their winter shelters dismantled, under the open space, whatever it was. They were reduced to a tent, and they did it anyway. One of the women that went to Betty Chin's, and I have every respect for Betty Chin, but one of the women that went there, I, I had to convince her to give it a try, even though she was going to go and, because of her situ, her particular situation, she was not sure, she, she was fairly certain that she would be thrown out because she could not follow some of the rules. And it was not, it was, is because of her, like, it's hard to explain, when you talk about individuals, like, so I'll just say that. The focus strategies, the implementation plan, said Housing First has no requirement of participation in a program. And the Betty Chin facility is a program, and that's why there are the very restrictive rules, that very few housed people would be able to follow. The implementation plan said very clearly, do not disperse an acampment. It is inexpensive, much more expensive, and much more harmful than relocating. I, so, I did not put in a proposal, first of all, because I got a call from somebody asking me not to compete with AHA. And I, AHA is great, but their proposal of dispersing people, the, the people into three locations, I disagreed with. It's more expensive. One location, you would have three staff instead of three locations with one person. I propose to you that you take the site under the Samoa Bridge, and you give it to AHA to do their three proposals there. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask public speakers to please not hang on to the mic, because it, it, we have enough trouble with that mic as it is.
Thank you. My name is Brian Jessup, I'm the minister of the Humboldt Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and I know you're happy to see me again. I really want to thank you for the work you do on our behalf. I know it's not easy. I'm going to tell you three things that you already know. First, this problem is not going to go away soon. This is a national problem. Cities really need to get together and really figure out together how to respond to the human beings. And that's the first thing. The problem's not going to go away, and you're not going to have people housed in six months, and you know that. Second thing, you need all the help you can get on this. Thank goodness Betty Chin has a track record, and, and you've got St. Vinnie's, and you've got the rescue mission. A little bit of, of help goes a little bit of the way, but it isn't enough, is it? Because you know, there are, there are hundreds of people still unhoused. You need all the help you can get. So the third thing I have to say to you is, take the tremendous help and the tremendous work that's been done by AHA, team up with them. Greg Sparks, I love you, you do hard work, but vote against what this guy says. And team up with AHA, and it's not going to go away when you start working with AHA, but you're going to be taking small steps, and you'll be getting better. That's all we can do, is get better. And team up, get everybody on your team that you can, fund these people, and work with them, and things can get better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council at this time?
Is this, I haven't started speaking yet, the timer's going, the microphone's not at my level, it comes from up a little, can't it?
It's up as high as it's going to, you gotta.
Touch it.
They pushed the mic down, so.
All right, Robyn Donald here. I wrote a, my word piece a while back, which basically said, say, "AHA, yes," and the "BAH, BAHAs, BAH knows, BAHAs know." And everything that's been said about the conditions of homelessness, houselessness, lack of housing, has been said, and you all know it. And this, the 40 unit, that's $133,000, I believe that's the figure that we're going to ask, the county's asking DHHS to pay. So it's not, like, it doesn't cost nothing. Those private individuals, those companies are not putting out very much, if anything. It's all going to be coming out of the public coffer. And that's not a permanent thing either. It may be a suit against it that kicks it out. So it's a shame that the community at, at large, the churches, other people, didn't come forward, but your RFP was a pretty mean-spirited RFP, didn't really say, "We're going to partner up with you." It sort of said, "Gosh, how did three of us say there was a shelter crisis? How did the mayor say he thinks there's a need for a sanctioned campground? We got to cover our tracks. We can't really mean that." And that's what's happened, is backing off. But you were, you were right. You paid big bucks for the report that said Housing First, and Housing First is exactly what AHA's proposal is doing. You know, I saw a poster one time, it said, "These are different types of housing. There was a mansion, there was a castle, there was a duplex, there was a lean-to, there was a shed." And I said, "Oh, that's right, shelter, housing." It doesn't have to look like maybe a 40-year lived-in house, but I don't know, it seemed that the people who are in the houses, even on the city council, don't want to have their laterals inspected, even if they might be causing public health issues. Much as people living on the streets can contribute to public health problems, so can people in houses who refuse to take care of their property postpone it into the future. So this is an opportunity to do what some council members have said, "Let's have a, a project, let's try something and see how it works, and if it's successful, we can go forward." So that's my comment, is you've been figuratively shooting homeless people, beating them, but shooting them in the, in the foot, and you're shooting your own efforts in the foot by not embracing AHA.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the council at this time?
My name is Ann Anderson, and I'm asking you to support the AHA proposal, because it addresses the immediate urgent situation, it addresses a mid-term situation with the trends, the little, little houses, tiny houses, and then it works to transition finally to permanent housing through the Housing First program. So I think it addresses the full spectrum of time and issues on this, and it's very cost-effective. It's also a humane compassionate proposal. For all those reasons, I would really urge you to vote yes to support the AHA proposal.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council at this time?
I'm very tired, it's past my bedtime, but I just think that the Housing First, the, the tiny village model is perfect, because it does meet the, the objectives of the, of the Housing First model, permanent. And don't think little tents, tent villages, we're talking about little tiny homes, and I really like the analogy, an earlier woman made, with all due respect to homeless people, it's like trying to put a feral cat into a, into a box. A lot of these guys have lived out on their own, you know, not following the rules for a really long time, and I've always really questioned the success of trying to get them into traditional apartments in town. I just don't see it working, but just the nature of this tiny home village design, getting them designing it and working with it, is the key that's going to make it successful. So it's economical, you've got amazing people working behind it, and it completely meets the objectives that you guys have adopted, and this community needs.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on this issue at this time? All right, we'll close the public comment period then, and return at the council for action.
I will start. I'd like to thank AHA for putting together this proposal and all the information. I did have a very, what I thought was a productive and respectful meeting with AHA when they were working to develop some, some of this information for us, and was able to give some feedback, which I feel was incorporated into the proposal. And at this time, as proposed, I don't think it meets our current objectives. And that said, I would like to make myself available to work on retooling, or working towards a pilot project that does incorporate the tiny houses, and to the best of my ability, work with you to see if there's, you know, a private landowner, or a way that, that it can move forward. I don't think any of the sites that were identified were appropriate. We were looking at them at one time, and now they are, in my mind, not feasible. And that's based on staff input and neighbor input and all of that information. And, you know, you're right, we have been looking for a way to go forward and to try new things, and we were able to do so when a private landowner came forward, and a private entity not asking for funding, and that was able to move forward very quickly because of the conditions of that proposal, and because we're really, in my mind, between a rock and a hard place here. So I would like to work with you to continue to look for a way to help us transition after this, you know, this ending to the, the, you know, camping. this, you know, this ending to the camping opportunity at Washington Coster, which I realize is not ideal. And as we move forward with, you know, transitioning after that six-month period, I agree that we will need all the help we can get. I would like to say on a personal note, it has been really, really difficult to how should I say this? I feel that the relationship between at least myself and AHA has been strained by the interactions in this space and out in the community. And I'm a trained community organizer, I know building relationships is what you do, and having careful thoughtful forward-thinking research is what you do to move forward with local government. And local government has a lot of constraints, which is why we were looking for a private partner or a nonprofit partner, and identifying private resources to complement what the city can offer. And I do think we can offer technical assistance and staff, you know, assistance to move towards a solution, and I don't think we're going to have an immediate solution in six months. So anyway, I would like to extend the offer of my time to work with you. At this time, you know, I think we're pretty worn out of the camps, so even though I understand that the proposed campsites would be different, it is, it is really difficult to say yes to a camp, but I would like to look at opportunities for a pilot project. And again, I really, really appreciate your time and your passion for this work, but I'm not supportive of the proposal at this time. And I hope that we can rebuild the bridges that, you know, for me have been kind of burned. I'm getting exhausted of being denigrated. And I understand that this is a passionate point for many folks, but I'm getting really sick of it. So I'm here to be here as a partner, but I don't, you know, it's hard to say yes to meeting with folks that you think might just be really difficult partners. So if we can work to improve our partnership, I'm ready to help.
Linda?
Well, I feel quite a bit differently here. I've watched Tuesday morning, people streaming in to Cooper Gulch, I've watched people streaming down Myrtle Avenue, Broadway, Fourth and Fifth Street, and I know that all those folks are going to go set up camps somewhere. And I'm not crazy about camps, I mean, who is? I'm sure the people who live in them aren't exactly crazy about camps. But this is not the marsh, this is an organized camping location that would be supervised and have people working in it who are not just the campers. I hesitate to say I support this, I would like to see one camping location of 30 people. I don't think that lumping 130 people together in one place, because you can have three people there at any time, I think that's a lot of people to have in one place and to be able to control the situation at all. I would like to see us go with one of these locations, and I don't think that underneath the bridge is a terrible location on the T Street, it's in my ward. I'll hear a lot about it, I'm sure in my ward, but I think anywhere that you say you're going to put homeless people, you're going to get a reaction from the neighbors like we saw with Betty Chin's project. People have got to have someplace to go. We're going to have the same public sewage problems, I mean, I can just smell it coming this summer, I'm sorry. I can smell it coming in my neighborhood, because it's going to be so much, because we moved out, you know, 100 people, let's say, with a nice estimate, we put 40 people in housing. I would love it if we could say, "Okay, we're going to put the rest of those people into housing, or we're going to transition the people that Betty has in her housing into permanent housing so that we can put some more people in and rotate that way and get it all done lickety-split." But I think realistically, in my mind, it's going to be five years out before we can put everybody in, and I hope we can do that. I think we can with the program we have set down. I think with focused strategies, they had no idea, you're right, they had no idea we were planning on moving in an encampment of 150 people at that time out of the marsh, and that we had a project that we needed to do it for at the time they wrote their program. They didn't know we had to do that. So they didn't put any ideas down on paper about that, but temporary housing is a part of Housing First. You are allowed to put a roof over somebody's head temporarily. And then what I would like to do is see this village become permanent, and then they could, it'd be a permanent housing. But I think if we just like throw the baby out with the bathwater, we're not going to get anywhere. And I think if we wait too long to do this, we're going to have established camps all over the city that are really going to be a detriment to our city. So I'm in favor of one of these proposals, I'm also in favor of, because we did, give Betty Chin $50,000 for a project that was not permanent. It is good, it's a good project, and I totally support that we gave her some money to do it, but it isn't in the Housing First, permanent housing structure, if you look at it that way. And moving people around the city is against what they said in focused strategy. So some of the things we've had to do, you know, weren't in that book, but we had to do them. And this is something else we really need to do, we need to get people in controlled environments so they aren't just out there all over town, so that I don't have to like get out in my backyard with pepper spray and run people out of my backyard. I tell you, it's going to be bad. And I, it makes me angry that we took this long, because I've been trying to talk and say, "Hey, I know we need to do this, but we need to get something in place to take care of it." I don't know who here lives someplace where people aren't going to be in their backyard or in their alley. I don't know who on the council lives in those places, because it's really going to be a problem. And I really hate the whole sewage and needles and all of the things that our green spaces are going to have, because people have to be there. There isn't a lot, sure, some people are going to disperse through the rest of the county, and that doesn't bother me a lot, okay? Because I think Eureka's been taking the brunt of all the homelessness in our county. But we've got to do something, and I think this is a pretty good plan.
Any more comments? We sure do.
I make a motion, we extend the meeting until 10...
Forty-five.
Forty, 35?
Forty-five.
Forty-five? 10:45, I could go with that.
For yes votes, Councilmember Chair Bellini dissenting, motion carries.
All right, any more comments? Kim?
I just, I'm not sure where to start. I have a lot of comments. You know, I, this has been a very challenging issue for everyone, for everyone, and I too have felt very frustrated with the way that it's been handled, as far as the council meetings, I mean, for God's sake, people come here constantly yelling at us, "We're never doing it right, we're never doing it good enough for you, the police suck", you know, "Everything is wrong." And it's really hard to just hear that over and over and over and over and over and over and want to be helpful. It really is. Now I'm going to fast-forward to the actual people that I have concerns about, and I think we have, we share that, we share that. You know, Opportunity Village has been brought forward as a model many, many times, and, you know, I do, that's a workable thing, it works up there, and I could see it potentially working here. But the thing about Opportunity Village is that they started up with $98,000 private cash, they had $114,000 in kind and materials and labors to get that started, they had 24 businesses that supported them and 38 individuals. I think that I'm willing to give a little, but, I mean, frankly, there just hasn't been enough brought to the table. I mean, the fact that we need to pay for it, we need to provide the land, and it's really frustrating, because I know you've been working hard, and I want to tell you that, you know, I too am willing to work with you, and you know that, Nezzy, that I am willing to work with you to find a private piece of land and see what we can do to make a pilot project, to make this work. I want to say, you know, I've heard a lot of comments tonight from folks about this, the container shelter. I actually saw Jimmy and Ronnie today, Jimmy was here earlier, at the mall, and Ronnie's saying to me, "You know, Kim, it's weird, because like, everybody that lives out, they're my neighbors from the marsh, so there's community there." Now, not everybody is out, not everybody is housed, you're absolutely right, and I'm going to say it again, you cannot manufacture willingness, you can't. You can't. We've been working with people, one guy, you guys know who he is, four months we had a house for him, he was unwilling, still unwilling, finally, you know, got into a motel and kicked his friend to the curb, after she helped him move, you know? I mean, this is what people do to survive. So I guess, you know, and I'm so tired of the conspiracy theory, I mean, come on, you guys, you know, we're all doing it all behind closed quarters, and, you know, we're all being all this devious stuff, I mean, it's just, it's getting boring. Okay, so, like I said, I don't doubt that this is a workable thing, you know what I'm talking about. I know that this is a workable solution, and I'm, it's unfortunate that there's no money or land to make it work right now. I really, really wish there was, we've been working on it for two years, and I know you've been working, and I've seen you working with people, and I appreciate that. But we've got to have something, you've got to bring something to the table, and I know you're bringing your experience and all of that, but the city can't foot the bill, we just can't. At least, I'm not willing to support that. So those are my comments for now.
Any other comments? Motion?
I have a comment first.
Go ahead.
If you look at the proposed costs, the AHA has proposed that they're putting up $22,040, and that's quite a bit for a community organization. They want us to put up 50, and they're putting up 14 of theirs and 8,000 from the residents, so it's not just us who'll be giving that money. And yeah, I'll make a motion because I want to get out of here tonight, and I don't think I'm going to change anybody's mind, so I would like to move that the city work with AHA to open one location at the foot of T Street, near the Samoa Bridge, to accommodate 30 people for originally in tents and then moving into tiny houses, and also appropriate $50,000 from our housing successor funds to fund it.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion? Melinda?
I move that we deny the requests for the housing successor funds and use city-owned property for a sanctioned tent camp that transitions to a tiny house village.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Go ahead.
Just speak towards the motion. Basically, I agree with staff, it doesn't meet our criteria, and I will not vote for any city dollars to go to a tent city or tiny houses. It's just that simple, and you won't be able to change my mind.
I actually am interested in Linda's idea, particularly if she's going to go to bat for this project in her ward. That's great. Foot of T Street is interesting to me as an opportunity, and I am not willing to dedicate the funds at this time, but I'd like to explore it further, and I'd like to hear more about how we could possibly make that work. And my hope would be that the camp portion would be extremely short, and that the transition to the tiny houses would be quicker. And I, separate from that, I just wanted, I had a couple of other points that I had written on notes to myself about, one of them is that the phrase "safe, warm, and dry" is not owned by AHA, that's a phrase used in, you know, to talk about housing needs for human beings. So we're not stealing any of AHA's terminology or proposals, and, you know, absconding with any ideas, I think we're openly sharing ideas and trying to find something that works. So the city's not going to steal anything from AHA. With regard to the number of beds that are available, I just want to note that the police department put together a number of beds for the last quarter of the year, January through March, which Chief Mills kindly gave me access to. And with the exception of two dates in January, the, when the Eureka Rescue Mission dorms were full, for the rest of that quarter, they were not full, and the capacity is 60 beds for men, between 22 and 33 beds for women, so it maxed out, that's 93 beds. We also have St. Vincent de Paul now as an overflow location, which hasn't been utilized yet because the rescue mission has not been full at 35 beds, and then the Betty Chin and GECOP project at 40 beds, that makes 168. So while I know that those are not ideal conditions for everyone, and that those are, you know, do not, that many people don't want or refuse to go there, that is 168 beds for the time being, which is, in my mind, what justifies us waiting to act on the proposal until this date. We do have temporary shelter for people who will go to those places, so I, that's all I can say about that. But I look forward to working with AHA, and Linda would be interested in meeting with you and AHA to talk about the foot of T Street.
Go ahead, Mary.
So the concept that somehow, if you do this somewhat tent city, gravitating toward a tiny house village, all located at the foot of T Street, it's not an image, it's not a visual that I'm interested in, and so, and the other thing is that this whole idea that people have to walk around town with all of their possessions on their back, again, the city has been over backwards, has acquired storage units and totes that are not, that are 60-something gallon totes to put their, huh? 96, to put their possessions in that they don't want to carry around on their back all day. So that frees them up to be more, you know, like Betty has said, that if you don't have to carry all your stuff around all the time, you can have a briefcase, you can have your lunch bag or your backpack, and you can blend in with the general populace, you can go do your errands, you can get whatever you have to get. And, you know, that is the beauty of what the city has proposed, has done for all these people, that there is, there are solutions that have been offered and the people could take advantage of, they're choosing not to. Betty, the GECOP place is a, gives people choices, it also, for the first time, gave people a chance to go someplace where they weren't going to be denied because of their dogs. So that is a huge game changer. I don't know how many people there have dogs, and how many people jumped on the chance to be there with their dogs, but there's a kennel there, I personally helped to put up a tarp area when I saw that the dog was going to get hot, so I said, "We need to put something up." Betty lickety-split got a tarp for me, a couple of people that were part of the GECOP people, we got tie-wrapped it to it so that the dogs are protected, and then I went back the next day, and Betty has added another little tiny piece, because apparently it still was a little too much sunny in there, so it's only, it's mostly open. Anyway, this is all positive, good things for people who want to take advantage, and the people who don't want to take advantage, the police are going to be going into the gulches and the greenways, the chief has promised that, that they're not going to be allowed to just disperse all through the city and camp wherever they want. So again, those people can all start going, put their stuff in storage, approach the city for putting their stuff in storage, and then be freed up to tool around town, go get their money at the welfare building or whatever, wherever they get their checks and stuff, and have a kind of life. And the people that want to hide in the bushes and, you know, and do their drugs and stuff like that, I don't know where that's going to go. Anyway, at this point, they've got choices, there's, they have chances, and they're all positive. And so I agree that I agree that, I agree with the city staff's evaluation of the fact that this doesn't match what we were proposing or asking for. that this doesn't match what we were proposing or asking for, and that what we do have right now is exactly what we were proposing and asking for. And I want to see, give it a chance to work in the six months. Hopefully Betty's going to transition people in and out of there and faster than what the pessimists think. So I'm optimistic about it. I feel that the dogs have a chance now to be with their owners. They go and sleep with them at night in the little, in the bedrooms, and that's all positive. And so I'm going to support this.
Just to be clear, the city is not going to store people's belongings for an unlimited amount of time. So people will have to find housing within, I don't know, what is it, 90 days? Yeah, and I think that's unlikely.
Any other comments?
So I would be willing to look at the pilot project as long as we still didn't have any money. I would be willing to look at the foot of T Street. But I would like us to not propose, I would like no city funds to be available. I would like to work with you on that and figure out how we can, could make that short-term happen. I don't know about anything long-term. I've talked about it before, it would be great if we could get a long-term property owner or a piece of property or some way to invest in a piece of property that we've located some that are kind of expensive to make something like this work. I don't think it's going to work anywhere on city property for long-term. But we need to embrace all of our options and see what's going to work. So I'm willing to consider looking at that if it were brought back.
Any more comments?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes, we have a motion in a second.
The motion is staff recommendation, which is to deny the request for housing successor funds and use of city-owned property for a sanctioned tent camp that transitions to a tiny house village.
And the other thing about that proposal at T Street, I'm sorry, it's very late. It's been really a long kind of time here. But I would not be interested in the tent piece. I would be interested in supporting folks into building their own structures and, you know, maybe staying somewhere else at that time. I don't know how long it takes to build a structure, but I know at Jefferson, didn't you guys build them in a day? So, you know, I'd be willing to look at that.
There's a motion in a second. Go ahead and vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Atkins dissenting, motion carries.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Chief Mills wanted to give a brief report on the, look this up, the Parent Project. Late evening, Mayor and council members. I was supposed to be with Jillian Wadsworth, but she had to go home to take care of a child since it was getting kind of late. Jillian is now working with the Humboldt County Office of Education, and they have put together a project called the Parent Project. And it has been used very successfully in other cities and including Arcata over the years. And so we've taken a look at it. We think it's worth trying here in Eureka. There's minimal cost to the city. And in the long term, it might have great value to the city. So when kids are going through school, it can be a very tough time, as many of us who are parents and have been parents know. Sometimes get, then the pressures that kids face today is much greater than what, well, I did. I can't speak for the rest of you. But in terms of drugs and alcohol and video games and things that can really get them into a bind. And on top of that, they have to compete for grades in school and athletic, and some just can't get there. So consequently, they wind up getting involved in antisocial behavior. So this Parent Project, rather than allowing parents to continue to butt heads with their children and come to this big battle crisis in the home that seems to go on day after day after day, this Parent Project allows them and teaches them how to solve those problems. And we think that's a great idea because it can help children go away from antisocial behavior and a life of criminality and get some things straightened out. It puts the parent back in charge. It puts the parent back in the driver's seat as opposed to just being mired in this constant conflict with their children. Where the program has been implemented, and it started in the LA area over 20 years ago, there was a 33% reduction in juvenile criminal recidivism. There was a 98% reduction in school expulsions, a 73% reduction in juvenile-related law enforcement calls for service, and a 75% reduction in the risk factors that draw kids into criminality. That sounds like a pretty successful program to me. So what you do is you take children, for instance, who we get a lot of radio calls on, and if you listen to the police scanner or if you listen to our radio calls, you'll hear calls like this almost every day. My 13-year-old child refuses to go to school. I want the police come and make them go to school. Or my child has been using drugs, I don't know what to do. But many parents are afraid to call the police. They're afraid the police are going to come and take their kid to jail. And the reality is, there really isn't, there really isn't much we can do with that child all in and of ourselves. So what the Parent Project seeks to do is to put the resources in place through a multi-week training program where they are taught how to de-conflict and how to work with their children to be able to find solutions to problems and de-escalate the tension in the house. As a result, if they embrace these resources and learn, they can dramatically reduce the problems in the house and learn how to work with their children. For instance, some parents get so mired in the conflict, they can't remember what positive reinforcement is. They can't remember that if you offer a child, if you take away a benefit from a child, that if you give a certain amount of time to say, we'll give this back to you if your behavior improves over three weeks. So because when you're in the midst of that tension and that many homes find, that's how that takes place. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit disorganized because I've been up since four. So as a result, EPD has implemented this program. We have our first class going right now. That class graduates May 10th, and 21 families are graduating from the program and be able to work with their children. The average cycle is between 40 and 60 parents. So with our new records management system, we're going to go through, look for all the calls for service, where we get multiple calls for service from families and seek them out. And then promote it through venues like this, and we'll also do some media in the future to say, if you're having problems, we can help. And on a personal note, we have some friends who went through this problem and went through this class with their child who was smoking a lot of marijuana. And as a result, the kid's going to school, to the university next year, probably to San Jose State. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity for EPD to work with the community, to work with Jillian Wadsworth, to work with the Humboldt County Office of Education, and to more importantly, work with the parents. And this will be a co-led class between, with a Eureka Police Officer who we're sending to a school this summer, as well as the social workers and clinical workers to work through some of these projects, through some of these problems with the folks who desire to do so. Not only are we doing it, but this is now a county-wide effort. The Sheriff's Office, Fortuna, and then Arcata are all involved in this project. And I think that as a result, maybe we can get some kids back on the right path by just working with the parents. So we just wanted you to know about it, recognize that we are working with juvenile problems and hopefully take that down the road, and we'll do some metrics to figure out how successful we are.
Just a quick question then, is Jillian, is she a consultant to the police department then? Or is this something that's offered through the county?
She is employed by the Humboldt County Office of Education, and she works with us. Each department had to throw in a couple of dollars to help phrase some of the cost of the program. I look at it this way, if I don't have to answer 10 calls for service, we've paid for that in dividends.
Chief? Do you have a list started?
We're wide open for anybody who might want to join our program.
Wonderful, okay. Thank you so much. What a great, great thing.
You bet.
Actually, if people do want to participate, do they just...